All right, I will call to order the regular meeting at 6:01 PM on November 9, 2023. A quorum has been met. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mr. Pittman.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagmireno.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
All right, with that, we'll start the meeting. The number two is to seat new board members. As everybody's aware, we had nine candidates come through an interview process. And last week, on Thursday or Friday morning, we did select Dana Wiley. So if Miss Wiley, you can join up, we will go through the... All right, with that, I'm going to ask you, I'm not going to actually read it back to you and have you repeat it. I'll just have you, if you could just sing it, something we're doing.
That was not on my resume. Do I have to push this?
If you could just walk through the...
Okay. "I, Dana Wiley, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of District 158 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of school district assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to see changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for District 158. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school to advance the district, to advance the vision for District 158. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district forward towards fulfilling the visions the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal
Well. You may not register first. Dana, get settled. We will move on to number three, which is to move into closed session at 6:05 PM. We would ban roughly about seven o'clock, as in what's in the agenda here is what we're going to talk about in closed session. And with that, can I have a roll call?
Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Troy, for the second.
Mr. Quagmireno.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
All right, with that, we will move down the stairs. Do you mind if I grab that black one for them?
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
But anyway.
(laughter)
Yeah.
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 All right, so we will move to exit closed session at 7:14 PM. We've done that already, so we will zoom in public session at 7:14 PM. We have a roll call. Roll call please.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mr. Quagmanno.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
All right, four point one action as required. I will make a motion for, at the direction of myself and Ms. Wiley, to be able to spend up to $5,500 to conduct a survey with the community with respect to the superintendent's search and using a reputable vendor for that. I'll give it a second. Thank you, Ms. Murray. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Troy.
There we go. Present.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Quagmanno.
Yes.
Mr. Bitman.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. We will then move to the pledge of allegiance. I think we have some visitors here.
We've got our November Huntley High Five winners here tonight who are going to lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, and civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so I'm now going to ask each one of our students to come up and introduce themselves briefly to you, and then Ms. Lambert is going to say just a little bit about each one. So first up, we've got Jonathan Daly, and one of the parents, Mom or Dad, who won. Mom, okay, Mom will do that.
Hi, this is Jonathan Daly. He is eight years old, and he's here to be recognized for walking.
Tetric staff had this to say about Jonathan. Jonathan Daly is one of our amazing strategy education students who's been on an incredible journey. He's transformed from just 23 steps with a walker to an impressive 242 steps without his walker in just three years. He continues to achieve and reach well beyond his goals. He always brings a smile to everyone who is around him.
I am in fourth grade, and Conley.
And Wyatt, here's what Conley had to say about you.
Wyatt is from Mrs. Jacobs' class. Wyatt is a great collaborator and is always using his critical thinking skills. He is respectful, good-natured, and always willing to help out. Way to go, being an example of what an awesome coyote to be.
My name is Ben, and I'm nine years old, I mean 10 years old, and my favorite drink is coffee.
We could use some of that. Are you from LaBee?
Yes.
All right. Ben has been nominated for the self-atticacy recognition through the Council of Exceptional Children. Ben has been an absolute joy to watch grow and mature over several years at LaBee. He looks out for his friends, and he wants to do what's best in school. Thank you for exemplifying what a lovely leopard truly is.
Thank you.
I am in seventh grade, and I go to Hyman Middle School.
Alexia, that was your Hyman son. I know this is the hard part, right? You're a great student. Alexia is a member of our National Junior Honor Society at Hyman. She is always willing to help and is kind to everyone. She greets students at the front door in the mornings and helps with the garden at Hyman on the weekends. Alexia excels academically and is a friend to anyone who is in need.
Hi, my name is Archum. I live in Marlowe Middle School. I'm in seventh grade.
All right. Archum joined Marlowe last year after moving from Belarus.
Yep.
Not only is he doing wonderful at all of the classes, he's also a great cheer buddy and a friend to our other students, joining us from the Ukraine, Belarus, and Russia. Archum is a model for his peers. He's always has a positive attitude and is eager to learn new things each and every day. What a true Marlowe must-be you are each and every day. Thank you.
I'm Jonathan, and I'm a freshman at Huntley High School.
Jonathan is a vigorous overachiever and one heck of an active learner. He is definitely made in mark, or in global studies. I'm impressed with his classroom demeanor, always looking to answer questions, always looking for ways to participate, always diligent in his homework. Jonathan has continued his academic path for the entire semester so far, and I see no signs of him stopping. Jonathan is BR, be respectful, be responsible, be involved, all the way at the high school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Thomas Freighton, and my grade is, it's my last year of the light program, and my age is 21.
Thomas, here's what the light program staff had to say. Tommy exemplifies our core values of kindness, respect, responsibility, safety, and involvement on a daily basis in the light program. He is a perpetually kind and respectful student who has worked so hard over the last several years to build his skills to be able to demonstrate personal responsibility and safety, as well as being involved with our community.
as well as being involved with our community. His hard work has paid off, and he currently has two jobs, earned his driver's license, and can utilize public transportation whenever needed. Tommy has also shown growth in the area of community involvement. He was one of few students who volunteered his time representing the light team at the recent October Rad Event, was a role model during the McHenry County College's recent job fair by independently interacting with a local business representative and putting practice what he has learned in light, in his light classes. He truly embodies the essence of our core values, serving as an inspiring role model to our fellow students.
First, under your order. Trainee. Oh, you too. And then guys, we'll have you come up. You guys see John?
Yep.
Happy Birthday, everybody!
Oh, excellent. Yay. And there might be some others who want to take a picture, so maybe stay there for a moment.
Happy Birthday, everybody!
All right, everybody look over here. All right, good job. Thank you, everyone.
Next, we'll move on to number six, which is student participation. And we have some middle school students who I believe were competing in band or orchestra.
Correct.
Hello, my name is Laura Whitaker. I'm the orchestra teacher over at Heinemann. And today, we have to present to you all the students that made IOMA Junior Ensembles for orchestra and band today, so it's exciting. I'm here to represent my student, Edie Mason. She has worked so hard and practiced so much to get into the IOMA Junior Orchestra. So basically, IOMA is Illinois Music Education Association. And every year, they let all the middle schoolers audition to try to make this top ensemble, and they only take the very top audition. So we're so proud of these students working so hard, Edie especially. So she's involved in so many musical things. She is not only involved in like the orchestra at Heinemann, but she's also involved in chamber orchestra. She just joined jazz band this week. She did fiddler, a fiddler on the roll. She asked to play her instrument live onstage for the musical, which is really, really cool. And she's part of EYSO, which is the Elgin Youth Symphony Orchestra. And she's not only just in it, she's the ambassador for it too. She does so many different things, and not just musical things too. She is part of the orchestra club, the science club at Heinemann, the National Junior Honor Society. And she is part of this astronomy club too at Huntley Library, which is so cool. So I just wanted to congratulate her. And the band teachers like to be introducing the bands, students as well. Like, you've done amazing, Edie.
All right, I'm Rick Rhodey. I'm one of the band teachers at Heinemann, and I'm going to introduce two of our four kids. I'll start with Aaron. He's a clarinet player. He'll notice his jacket also says bass guitar. He was working with the marching band at the high school. He was playing in the front ensemble with them as well. So obviously, these kids are very involved, you know, and they are in the top of their class. We know they are hard workers. I spent a fair amount of our summer, about once a week, all summer long, working with these guys. So it's good times. And couldn't be more proud of the work they put in. I'm not going to list everything he's in, but I am going to say they go out of their way to do things that we don't necessarily require them to do. Like, he came in yesterday and he says, hey, Mrs. Jay, Mr. Rhodey, I'm writing this duet for my, his sister's a French horn player in the marching band at the high school. He says, I'm writing this duet. Can you come and listen to it? So these are the kind of kids we got. Curious, you know, smart kids that work really hard. So, yeah, Aaron. And the next guy who we got is Austin, and he is a trombone player. And same, I got the same words to say for this guy. He's a hard worker, taught, you know, all the top classes at Heinemann, always working hard. And he's same kind of thing. He comes and tells me, oh, Mr. Rhodey, I went to this band camp over the summer, and we're, we're learning about double timing. Do you know how to double time? Yeah, Austin, I know how to double. Yesterday, today, we're in, end of class, he says, hey, do you know how to make two sounds at one sound trombone? I'm like, wow. You mean like when you sing in places? Yeah, 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 it's called multi-phonics, right? Oh, yeah, that's my next project. So curious kids, smart kids, hard workers. So, thank you, sir. Good work.
Hi, I'm Pam Jorgensen, and I get to work with these awesome guys over at Heinemann. So I have two students that I'm going to introduce. First, Theodore Harris, come on down. Theodore is an eighth grader at Heinemann, and he chose to play the best instrument in the world, the French horn. If you wonder, that's the instrument I play. So, yes, he chose the French horn. He is an incredible player, and he, he's just, I love to listen to him play. He's way better than I ever was at his age. But besides music, he likes to play video games. He likes to hang out with his friends, and he's a good big brother. He likes to hang out with his sister, and he really enjoys watching movies. So congratulations, Theodore. And finally, we have Isa Gomez. Isa, come on down. Isa needs no introduction. When she walks in a room, you know that Isa is in the room. And she is an incredible trumpet player, and I just love having her in class. And I've been taking hair tips from her, so I just curl my hair. And Isa is involved in about a million activities. She's in NJHS Service Club, Ecology Club, are you in Student Council? She's in the, you know, just jazz band. Oh, she made IOMA Jazz Band last spring as a seventh grader. Oh, yes, long as it is well. So I just love having Isa in class every day. It's so fun. So congratulations, Isa. Before we let you go, we have the captive audience. We would like to say thank you, first of all, to our students, because as Mr. Rhodey said, they spent hours and hours, months, working on this music, and they only take the best of the best. So it is incredible that they got selected. Second of all, we would like to thank their parents for driving them to and from every rehearsal, practice, lesson, paying for all the lessons, the instruments. As you know, it's a lot. So thank you, parents. We appreciate all your support. We would also like to point out that this just, it doesn't just happen that kids can suddenly play instruments in middle school. So we would like to recognize all of our incredible elementary general music teachers and our fifth grade band choir and orchestra teachers. We could not do this without them. They set a really good foundation, and that's how we got so many kids into IOMA this year. It's all those elementary music teachers. So thank you to them. And finally, we would like to thank you, the school board, and the District 158 administration for providing us with all the resources and support that we need to get these programs up and running. It is not cheap, it's not easy, it is time-consuming, and we know that you support us all the way, and we appreciate it. So if you are around town ever, and you see us performing at, you know, Culvers, at Del Webb, at the farmer's market, we're going to be caroling, you know, pretty soon at the Santa thing in Huntley, at the Huntley Expo. You're going to see us. We're going to be there. Our students are going to be there. Our music students are the goodwill ambassadors to the community, right? So everything that you are putting into this, you know, that happens out in the community, we appreciate it so much. You made this happen, right? So remember that, and we appreciate everything that you do for the music program. So one more time, huge round of applause for these awesome kids. Thank you.
I know we lost one, but that's. Perfect. If you guys don't mind, I'm going to take one quick, and then you're welcome.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right. Ready, once, two, Heinemann. We all. You're welcome. Didn't see that.
This is Dr. Gray Marlowe, or no?
Marlowe, Marlowe?
No.
No, okay. All right. We will move on to number seven.
All right.
This is the student scoop.
We finally got a name. The segment each month will be the student scoop. And I am so excited to announce McCaven, two students here this evening to do the student scoop. We have Mr. Wyatt. Can you give everybody out their way? And Wyatt is in Mrs. Kometjak's second grade classroom. Did I say it wrong?
You said Kometjak.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I knew I was going to say her. Thank you, Wyatt, thank you. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, I guess my fault, yeah. And Ms. Semra, and you are in Mrs. Amador's dual-language class. Can you give everybody out their way? There you go. And as you may recall, last month, we started this student scoop, and we had our first pool at Conley. And we would love to hear from our two students. Now, I had the privilege of getting to know Wyatt last year because I read in his first grade class every month last year.
Mrs. Goldstein.
Yes, Mrs. Goldstein's class.
Yeah, and even what that day with the spacing with the chalk, we saw you outside.
Oh, with the sun, that's right, exactly. And then I got the honor this year to now meet Ms. Semra. And both of them, I asked, and they were nervous, and they said, no, we're very excited. So without further ado, we are going to turn it over to you guys to give a little bit of presentation about McCaven, which is our K first and second grade building here on our campus. So take it away. We're going to start out with a little video that provides kind of an overview of some things at McCaven, and then you guys are going to do your talk, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our talk is this.
My name is Wyatt. My grade is second, and I go to McCaven Elementary School.
My name is Semra, and I am in tenth grade, and I go to McCaven Elementary School. Having fun. The other teachers teach us things, that I can make stuff that art, and I can play stuff that we eat, and we can also learn things in books and class. And I really like develop writing or applying skills because that just makes me like, like, oh, my goodness, this is, this helps me so much. Everybody is really kind to each other, there's nobody pushing, and it's always really fun to learn at McCaven. I think the tips are conversation, help, activity, movement, participation, and success. Just means like you, you're one of the, like a star student to be respectful, responsible, and involved. I would say if you see someone like you stop, like someone fall on the ground, you can, you can pull up their hand and make them grab, and you can help them get up. Then you should like be kind to people. If you want to borrow something, say, please, thank you. So we would say like, and that we do like this.
So we'll spend, like, in math, we do, like, this. We try to figure out the unknown number and stuff off. So we, um, put a box full of unknown numbers at the middle.
What's behind my back? It's where, like, half ten two. You break, she's behind your back. You show somebody who's your partner. And they have to guess how many, how many stat numbers.
Um, shake and spill. Uh, so when we have a cup, and you shake and then, and then spill. And we have the yellow counters, and some are red. We can go on the equation, like, four plus forty equal eight. Oh, math is so fun. We do a list of math, like, right now, we're on Unit Three. And Unit Three is mostly, like, measuring stuff. And it's one of my favorite units. Because you gain the cards, cubes, and different stuff. Because, like, we're having fun at the same time learning math. And it just helps me because I'm having fun at the same time learning.
I, I would, this is a place to indicate. I would change that the, the lunch supervisors are supposed to block.
All the high events workshops that have a commitment to diversity in the school community. To keep everybody safe. So if anybody does that stuff to anybody else, I can tell them to stop it, to, and to keep them safe. I'm a cheer symbol.
Wait, why am I not on, on one of the last ones?
Cause you're first right now. Cause now you get to talk, don't it?
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is, my name is Semra Verzak. I am in second grade, and I am in Mrs. Amador's class.
My name is Wyatt Corina, and I'm in second grade in Mrs. Kometiak's class.
What makes McCabe such a special place to learn?
What makes McCabe such a special place to learn? Semra? Everyone is kind and gets along. I get love like everybody else. And for me, there are so many fun things that help me learn. You can play with a partner, and use your computer, too.
How are you learning to be a cheer, Semra?
We have amazing rules. And we go to classes, learn how to be good in the lunchroom and car ride or line in all different places in the school. I want to follow the expectations. I listen to Mrs. Kometiak to be safe in the bathrooms and take turns.
At McCabe, Semra, what is your favorite?
Semra, what is your favorite math game at McCabe?
What's behind my back? We play partners with ten two and put some behind the back. Then we have to show them a few blocks, and they have to guess how many are behind our back. I actually have two, so let's start with the first one. Shake and spill. You get a cup and put counters in the cup. You shake it up and spill out the counters. You put back the yellow, and your partner counts up the red to see what is left in the equation. And capture the square. If you audition and put a box around the sun to see how mu, how many boxes you and your partner make.
If you were the principal, Semra, what would you change or what would you do?
Organize, organize events and workshops at highlight and celebrate the diversity in the school community. Also add more decorations around the school. I would change the brick walls next to the gym because you can get an injury. It pulls your, it pulls your hair. Also, everyone should do a list of math for math games.
And?
Thank you.
Does any of you have any questions?
So Mr. McConville, what kind of padding do we have on those brick walls? Poor Wyatt, serious. Now, how did you pull your hair out on the brick wall?
Oh.
Oh, no.
So it, oh, so it, like, um, if you get too close to it, it has, like, little, little, small things.
Yeah.
Like little, small holes. And they, and, and sometimes they get a little too small, and then your hair goes into it. And then it just, and then you try to come back, but like, it pulls it. So literally, that's how you get the injury.
Wyatt, Wyatt, I can, I can see Semra having that problem. But you are not so sure. Your hair is so short.
Yeah, like. How do you get the, oh, how you feel it is, like, it hurts. Any, any other questions?
Thank you for answering my questions. You guys did great enough. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question for Semra. Can you tell us what you like about the dual language class?
Like, it's really fun because you don't only get to learn, like, one language, but it's two. And like, we do different, like, if it's a different language, and most people in the school don't know this language. Uh, since we're doing two, like, we could speak Spanish and English at the same time. So if we leave, it's the class with English and Spanish. So we mix them around. So it's just really fun to do both at the same time in one class.
So you might be doing math in Spanish, is that correct?
I can regard, yes, but we don't do it anymore. But we do it in English, but we still have, like, Spanish and English together sometimes. But we do Spanish in the morning every day.
Okay.
Could you tell us something in Spanish that you learn? I know, I didn't need to do that.
He can take a minute. He can take a minute.
What's your favorite color in Spanish?
Azul.
Azul.
Azul, there you go. Well, I don't have a question, but I would just like to give a comment. And, um, we have now learned what the school board is. And these individuals are up here giving their time volunteering for you guys and all the other students in this school district. So it's extremely important for us and for them to hear your voice and to hear the things that you have to say about what's going on in your schools and how we can improve. Because that's the things they do here. They make decisions that are going to make the school better for you. And the other, so don't ever lose that voice. And the other comment is, I would just like to say thank you to your parents, one, for bringing you this evening, but two, for partnering with the school. They do can, we can see you're doing a fantastic job. You are raising the future leaders of this community. And so thank you for all that you do in, in support of our school.
Semra, I have another question. I have a question for you.
Just unread it.
I have a question. Well, I have a question for you. Do you speak any other language except for Spanish and English?
Actually, yes, I do. I speak Turkish at home. But most of the time, then I speak English. But sometimes I speak Turkish because I'm from Turkish descent.
Can we get a picture with you? Is that something in here?
I actually, I actually speak another language except for English. Sometimes I do speak Korean.
Really?
So like, tell, ask me, Mrs. Lombard, how to say, like, hi in?
Wyatt, can you tell me how to say hi in Korean?
Annyeongdo.
Annyeongdo?
Not, I'm, annyeongdo. Or you could also say, annyeongseoyo. You can say it either way.
If annyeongseoyo more like, hi?
It's more like hello.
Oh, good. Thank you for that. You guys can come back anytime. Dr. Horio, I'm glad you were here for this. You got some great third graders.
All right, with that, we will, uh, move on to number eight public comment. I'm not sure how you're gonna follow that, but.
Um, this is on, right? There we go. All right. Um, my name is Crim Burns, and I'm a parent of a second and third grader, um, in the district. I'm attending today in support of Dana Wiley for the school board position. I believe she's a great choice for the role, and I'm pleased that the board voted her on. And I look forward to the positive changes that Dana will bring to the table. Um, secondly, I'm here, um, to say that I'm glad that, um, Ms. Lombard is being considered for the superintendent position. She's been with the district since 2002, and I believe her insights are invaluable. At the last post-board meeting, um, Ms. Lombard implemented the high fives for the kids' recognition program, where kids are recognized at each school for their characteristics, um, that make a good student. I think this is a great program, and we were able to see it here again today. Um, as well, um, my daughter told me this afternoon. She's like, Mom, Mom, I have to watch YouTube tonight. I have to watch the board meeting. I was like, you have to watch the board meeting? And now I know why. Because, um, she wanted to see the, her fellow students from McCabe and being recognized today. And I thought that was a great interaction to bring it back, um, see our students and recognize the positive behavior. Um, also, I heard positive feedback on the parent teacher advisory committee. Um, I was not able to make the last one, but I look forward to attending the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bobby.
Hello, my name is Rich Bobby. And I just wanted to thank the Board of Education for taking the time and diligence to spend countless hours interviewing nine applicants for the vacant board seat. Uh, your time, service is much appreciated. The process was extremely respectful and invigorating as well. Uh, I will say, uh, also, congratulations to Mrs. Wiley. I wish you the best. I'm sure you'll achieve positive outcomes for this board and really look forward to what you will be able to contribute to the, to the rest of the board here. Uh, one thing I will say that I, I learned in the process was that although each of you may have different opinions on what should be done for the district, you might have a difference of opinion on how things should be done for the district. But what I found in conversations with each of you is you all share the same why. And that's for our students. And so if there's any words of encouragement, is remember your why. It's about our students. And if that, and keep that in mind in the decisions that we make day in and day out for the students of, of this district. And I just walk away with a couple last asks. Uh, one is appoint Ms. Lombard. She's been phenomenal. She's a true leader in the community, in the district. I was part of the parent advisory, teacher advisory committee. I got to witness firsthand her leadership. I've seen her leadership in many other venues as well. Uh, she's respected by parents, families, the community, staff, educators. And I know you're not taking a vote today. I know you have to go through the process. But I would just strongly encourage you to consider Ms. Lombard, uh, for her exemplary leadership for the district. So that's, that's one ask. The last one is really about staying true to thinking of all students, specifically students involved in special education. That's near, whoops. That's near and dear to my own heart, uh, what I do for a career. And often, those students are the ones that are forgotten. And so I really encourage you to continue to support students in special education, especially the light program. As you saw Tommy and the success that he's made in that program. Oftentimes, there's not a pathway for students in programs such as the light program. It is the biggest fear of a parent and family member of the day that their loved one turns 22 years of age. And that's the day that the bus stops coming. And that's a big fear for them. And so we owe it to them in doing everything we can to help support them so that they have a pathway, much like any other student in our, in our district has a pathway. That that would be a pathway for them is looking at what options, bridges we can make to make sure that they're successful in their transition beyond the light program. Uh, and I think you could start there today. And I got the sense that you already believe in this by supporting Mrs. Gill's transportation vehicles. Cause without transportation, you can't really be integrated in the community. So like, it's truly a requirement to need those vehicles, not a luxury for those vehicles. Uh, and with that, I appreciate again your service, your leadership, and please remember, all students, always. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. All right.
I was actually gonna thank him for doing half of my speech. Cause normally, I don't get the.
Minute and a half.
Special education support over here. So I'm gonna take all three. Um, I have never enjoyed a board meeting as much as this one. I am blown away by those kids. I think you guys should keep them on the radar because they will be sitting up there someday. Or possibly your bosses, wherever your jobs may be. Um, thank you to the staff for being so responsive to my barrage of emails about conflicting meeting times. Um, with that said, a special services calendar is an absolute must. Inclusion on our own website is lacking, and there is no excuse. In the last few weeks, there have been so many events, and they've all been very informative. Sadly, I missed a few due to the overlapping. On 10/21 was the Rad Inclusion Event, which seemed slightly disconnected between the booths. Um, and for the record, HDA Special Needs Squad is the Sparkle Squad, not the Sparklers, not the Sparkles, Sparkle Squad. I know that's being really petty, but it is really annoying every time we go in, and it is just, it can't get right. Um, 10/25 was the P-Tech meeting and a C-Ec meeting that I had to miss as well. Um, the P-Tech meeting was run very well, and I look forward to the continued collaboration with parents and the district. 10/26 was the Spooky Buddies Best Buddies Halloween event at high school. I will request again that we switch it to one-way hallways against everything and hating the arrows that once existed on the floor. Um, the traffic in those hallway gets so crowded and so hot, and it's no good for people with sensory issues. I do want to give major kudos to everyone who makes that night and all the buddies club events possible. This event specifically is a great way to show the community all of the hard work and dedication that goes into Best Buddies Club. I'm still anxiously awaiting, though, for its return to Marlow Middle School. 11/1 was the Light Committee meeting. Thanks, um, cause I almost missed that one. Uh, so thanks to Kate for that. 11/7 was the Special Ed Transition Zoom about anxiety. We all struggle with that, not just our kids for special ed. All of our kids are struggling with that. I actually think that should have been opened up district-wide. I think a lot of parents would have benefited from that. 11/13, there is both a CAC guardianship meeting and a Special Olympics meeting at the exact same time. So if you can't attend both, please reach out to the organizers. They have sent out information. 11/15 is the next CAC committee meeting, which I think is the final November meeting, and I really, really hope so because, though I'd like you all, I'm exhausted. I said it last month, and I'll say it every month until it hopefully happens sooner rather than later, for Jessica Lombard to be the official 158 superintendent. She is the right choice, hands down. And lastly, I can't leave here without giving a huge congratulations to Dana Wiley. Congrats.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby. Moving on to number nine, addition and adoption of the agenda. Do we see any changes that need to be made? I'm not hearing any changes. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Thank you, Mr. Cargliano. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, with that, we will move forward with the agenda as written. So we will move to number 10, superintendent's report, Ms. Lombard.
Let's just have a brief one. I think McHaven took it away for us and kind of shared and highlighted a lot of the academic things that we have going on, and then I know Dr. McCrinnell will be sharing some of those. So first, I just wanted to start with some donations that we have received. The CAF America made a donation of $700 to the girls' golf team. Huntley Festival Foundation, Inc. made a $1,000 donation to the football team program. Coffee Nursery planted flowers for the HHS courtyard. This allows the SES program to engage in therapeutic activities. And the Square Darn PTA and Plant Hills donated trees to be planted around the Conley Playground, and I think those have gotten in because of weather coming, so I needed to make sure those things were there. So we thank all of those organizations for the donations to our schools and our programs. Next, I just wanted to do a reminder that our parent teacher conferences are coming up here in a little over a week, right before our Thanksgiving break. And we will have some information in our parent newsletter going out about that and the importance of those, as well as our weekly building emails. And this is just a wonderful way for our parents and the schools to partner about their individual children. And so, just I want to remind all the parents that this is your opportunity. You're taking in a lot of information, but please do not be afraid to ask questions. If you're not understanding the acronym or what is being discussed, because a lot of data will be being provided, please make sure you're having that conversation with your teachers, and then share with the building principals or ourselves over here at the district office, there are things that we can do again for parents, university-type things or different programs and organizations. Dr. McCrinnell will talk a little bit about some of our learning resources that will be passed out, and we will be pushing out in our staff, or our parent newsletters here coming up next week. But again, this time is critical for that partnership to be built. We want parents to feel that their teachers, the staff in their building, the administrators in the building, or the administrators over here are truly partners with you in the educational journey that you all have here at District 158. Also, I can't believe we're going to have to be talking about this, but I do just want to give a couple highlights about the extreme weather procedures. We will be pushing those out here in the newsletter. Hopefully, we won't have too many. I have been told by Mr. Rancosik, by the Farmers on the Hack, and the fact that the brown woolly, brown and black woolly caterpillars are out, that we will have a milder winter. So we are pretty hopeful about that. But I do want to say, our number one priority is obviously in-person learning. Some guidelines that we kind of use to make some decisions, set temperatures and things like that, that if weather is expected to improve, and maybe we get notification from those that we work with in our townships, that roads might be able to be cleared in a timely fashion, we have the option to do a late start. I cannot recall having done that in our district yet, but there may be an opportunity. We've already worked with transportation. The buildings have schedules that we could collapse and condense if we did a two-hour late start for weather that could be cleared. If something is looking that we'll have time to prepare, we may call an e-learning day for that. If something is where it's just out of the blue, you have no time to prepare, or it's going to be so extreme that we might not have capabilities with electricity, connectivity, and all of those kinds of things, it may be just a good old-fashioned delay. And we will make those decisions as we move forward together, but the most important thing will be that our social media, our website, all of our communication channels will be there to make sure that staff and parents are aware of what's going to happen, when it happens. And I believe our timeframe is that we like to make sure that a decision is made, mainly for our transportation, but also for our working families, by 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning so that people can plan before they head on out to work or they're coming in to get those buses warmed up. So we will have a graphic that will go out to kind of show those decision-making steps and some of the things that we will utilize for those tools, and probably some information about if an e-learning day is called for that day, what that might look like. In a nutshell, those are not necessarily, where somebody would be sitting there period by period, hour by hour, there may be some other purposeful practice-type things that can be done on those kinds of days. So more to follow on that. Board appreciation. November is school board appreciation month, and November 15th is school board appreciation day. Since we do not have a board meeting next week or falling on that day, we wanted to make sure that we recognize the six of you, seven, I know Mr. Thompson is not here, but for the hard work and the dedication that you have done, that you'll continue to do, that you'll start doing with there. And when you were giving the oath, and you were reading that, the end kind of stuck in mind here, it says, "I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development." And you know, it's been a short time that I've been here and in this role, but working with each of the individuals that's on this board, I can truly say that you do those things. You're thinking about that vision, you're thinking about students every single time you make that decision. And Mr. Bobby said it great. We all may not do things the same way, we may have different perspectives of how we look at it, but that why, that vision there for those students that were sitting there, and the students that are in each and every one of the homes here, and the work that I've seen by working with each of you in the five, six months, or the few years, or the 14 years, is that that is exactly your why, that you are here for the children, and I appreciate that. This year's theme from the School Board Association is learn together, lead together, and that can't be a more perfect year for us, right? We are all learning together, leading together as we look at what that vision is, and you all play such an integral role in finalizing our strategic plan and that vision for the district. And so for that, I say thank you very much. We have a little certificate, a little token of our appreciation up here, and I look forward to this continued journey. So while it's just one day, it's every day that I could speak for myself and administrators in our district that we thank you for your dedication and your commitment to our students and our community. And I'm going to stop, and I'm going to invite two new friends up. So we had our parent teacher advisory committee, and it was the first meeting where we did some more opening-type activities, building knowledge, getting information. With that, and more will come in our future meetings where there'll be some recommendations that they'll bring forward. But we did ask if we had a few parents who'd be willing to kind of share their impression and what happened at that meeting, and I believe we have, I know Diana's here and Lindsay as well. So if you guys could come on up. You didn't know you were getting, do that part when you signed up, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, is it sound? Yeah, it was great. Honestly, overall, I thought it was a phenomenal initiative, and I just have some notes on the exercises that we went through, kind of what I felt were the pros, what were the cons, what can be done better, I guess. So there was a huge turnout. We were given two exercises. The first exercise was, we were given sort of a list of, I don't know, a better term than, sort of like hot topics, and we were asked to star the ones that we thought were really, that resonated with us, or that we liked, the way that they were being handled. And we were asked to put a question mark next to the ones that we felt we were conflicted about, or had questions on, or felt that further discussion was needed. And so I really loved this exercise. The pros that I saw with this exercise is that I think it was extremely worthwhile because it gives administrators a tremendous amount of visibility into what parents are experiencing. So parents, I think, are kind of like your front line. You know, we hear from our children what's going on, and to be able to communicate that to the school board and to the administrators, I think is like extremely valuable. I also, the groups were actually quite large. There was a very, very large turnout, about 75 people, I think is what I heard. So I think that's good in the sense that you have a very wide cross-section of opinions, experiences that you can draw from, and a lot of diversity of thought. So I thought that was quite positive. I also thought that, I think the information gathered that evening is going to be really helpful in understanding high-level trends. So although there were many anecdotal stories that were shared, I think that you can very easily start to see the trend in certain topics, or the way that, in certain experiences, or, you know, how, what parents are hearing from their children. On the con side, or what I thought could have been done maybe perhaps a little better or we can learn from, is there was instruction that was given ahead of time, which I thought was good. However, I felt like a little more instruction would yield better results. And so I didn't know, just speaking for myself personally, I didn't know that the information would be collected, so I was just, I had a bunch of chicken scratch on my form. And I think had we known that those forms would be collected, we could have been a little bit more concise and more thorough in our comments, and I think that would be more helpful. The other, what I thought was kind of a pro and a con, well, I liked the fact that there was such a large number of people, and there's benefits to that. I also think that that has a downside in the sense that you can't really get very deep on something because the groups were quite large. So perhaps consider capping attendance and getting deeper on issues might be helpful. Oh, and the other thing that I would mention is, I felt like we had really good discussions, but some of the discussions seemed to be very anecdotal or very personal in nature. So like, my child experienced this, and I think there's a benefit to that, but I also believe we need to balance that with more sort of big picture, what are the trends that we're seeing in our school? But overall, I absolutely loved it. I thought it was a great exercise. And overall, the evening was extremely well-done, and you can tell that the exercises were very well-thought-out. The second exercise we were given was to come up with a problem statement, something that's affecting the school or the district, or any number of issues, and then to suggest data points that could be collected and reviewed in order to gain insight into that problem, which will ultimately lead to being able to solve it or come up with, you know, sort of an action plan. I got to say, that was my favorite. I absolutely love that. I was blown away with how data-driven and how data-driven the district is, and data-literate. And you and I spoke briefly, and everything that we were, my group was asking about, like, Kate, do you guys have data on this? So yeah, we got data on that. I could not believe the amount of information that's collected. I think that's absolutely wonderful. So with this, I would say the instruction on that exercise was extremely well-communicated, and really overall in the evening, the instruction was quite good. The exercise itself, I think, was extremely worthwhile because you're bringing issues to the table, and because we were broken out in groups, the issues were something that the entire group had sort of agreed on. So there was a number of people that were agreeing that, yes, this is an issue in our school district. So I thought that was well-done. On the, sort of the category of what we could do better, I think I would just be a little bit more intentional about splitting the groups. As I mentioned, we had a very large turnout, and so in the second exercise, we were sort of allowed to self-assemble, so I think that a little bit more direction on that, or like being a little bit more deliberate about how we break the groups out would be beneficial in keeping it organized. The other thing that I observed that evening is, we didn't have at our tables, I think in the second exercise, I think there were probably about 30 people broken out into groups of five or six. I think it would be helpful to designate a group leader or facilitator ahead of time to keep the conversations on track, and somebody that has been trained to a certain degree in advance of, this is how you to carry this exercise along, the sort of probing questions that you want to ask, and I think that you would, it would yield better results. I think that's all I have. Let me see. Oh, okay, so overall, as I mentioned, event very organized, extremely worthwhile. I'm honestly blown away with how much this district cares about our kids. Like, I did not expect that, and I got to tell you, this is the most fun I've had in a board meeting ever. This is my first time at a school board meeting, and I didn't expect. Yeah, yeah, I didn't expect that. But I just love Huntley, and I love the way that our school really comes together, or at least what I've observed, the way that we all come together for our kids, I think is tremendous. The only other feedback I would have is perhaps limiting the attendance at the P-Tech, limiting it to people that are very committed to being there, and giving maybe some pre-work in advance that's mailed out, to say, you know, these are the exercises that we're going to be conducting, these are the things that you want to talk about, be prepared to do or speak on. So, yeah, that's all I have.
I did not type out my situation, so please excuse me. So my name is Lindsay Younglove. I am two-fold. My oldest son just started kindergarten, so I'm brand-new to all of this. So when I first saw the P-Tech email, I was like, very excited. I'm a full-time working mom, so it's really hard for me to get involved during the school day, so to see that was after-school, I could make a difference. I'm also very nosy, so any peek behind the curtain like this is something that interests me. So when I went into it, I honestly didn't know what to expect. I don't really know anyone in the district. I grew up in the Wheaton Naperville area, so this was not my school district. I've always loved school. I actually went to school to be a teacher before I went to HR, so some of the verbiage and what we talked about was familiar, but it's been a hot minute since I've been in college, so a lot of it was a foreign language to me. The first portion that I was in was, I liked how you guys split it up with like elementary parents and then older parents, because we were able to relate and had similar things that we wanted to go through as far as issues were concerned. It also kind of stressed me out, because I didn't know vaping was a thing in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, so I'm like, oh my goodness, not looking forward to that. But in that time, I learned more about the law that was passed in Illinois that kind of prompted this committee, and the why behind the committee. So since my oldest in kindergarten, there's a lot of words and verbiage used that I had never had, so it pushed me to really listen and learn. The second activity that we did, the first one I thought was well-planned out. I think her suggestion of giving us ahead of time, because my group was a little confused, and you came over and explained to us, and then the light bulb started, so a little bit of a heads-up would be great. The second one was in the library. They explained what the sheet of paper was. I thought that was pretty cool. You got that peek behind the curtain, so that fills that bucket for me. And then you went into the little areas. We each had an administrator, and the one that I got was very receptive and open and listening to us. So I thought it was really. So I thought it was really interesting. I got to ask a couple of questions like, what is this? What is this? There was a teacher that was also a parent. She was using some verbiage I didn't know, so I was able to write them down on that sheet of paper. I actually took the paper back to my notebook and wrote them down to further educate myself after the meeting. Um, but I did feel the woman was listening. Where I work, we have something called Safe Seem Successful, and during that portion, I felt all of those things. The woman in the breakout was actively listening, explaining some of the things that we had questions on. I felt seen because of things that I had mentioned felt validated by other parents there. And the woman leading our crew, being successful, might sound a little bit weird if I translate to feeling that the group that I was in, was involved in, where we were able to add value to the meeting and felt that we'd be able to make an impact moving forward. Um, like I had mentioned, it just forced me to educate myself on what was going on so that I could be a better mom, a better person in the district. I educated some of my friends about what was going on, which they probably thought I was crazy, but, um, I didn't have any expectations outside going to meeting, but it blew me away. I literally went home, I was so excited to tell my husband what was going on. So I love that this is something that we're doing. I'm excited for the next ones and I hope that we can continue this trend on solving some issues and learning more about the district. So thank you for involving me.
Thank you.
Thank you both for those suggestions for, for those in the audience and, um, we will definitely put some of those things into action before we send out public access. But, um, again, too, I felt that was a large group. Um, it's manageable and we can look at some different ways with facilitators and involving some others, uh, to get the, um, part of that. So again, that seemed safe here. What was it, seen and safe and?
Safe.
There we go. Um, and so again, thank you both for coming and sharing that. We'll take those suggestions into play and we two are super hopeful that, um, oh, let's go beyond hopeful. We know that this committee is going to come up with some great recommendations that we can take, uh, action on here and move forward. So thank you.
Yes, thank you both for, uh, coming tonight and, and, and letting us know how it went because, uh, we do appreciate that very much. Uh, did you have anything else? So we will move on to number eleven, Dr. Merker.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my first update is about an additional overnight trip that we need to add to our, um, to the process that we have. So just for all of you that are not aware, once a year in May or June, we bring a list of overnight trips to you and those include sports trips, um, field trips, anything that our students might go on. And then you guys grant approval that we can go ahead and plan and move forward on those. Um, our varsity softball team was set to play at Metamora. Is that how you say it? Just that's it, dear. I asked him first, outside of Peoria location. Um, and they were set to play for a doubleheader on April the sixth, but now the tournament has added more teams to it and so they're going to play on two days, April fifth and April sixth. So that will require the students to do an overnight trip. That was not on the originally approved list. And, um, we're fully supportive of that. Mr. Wilson over at the high school reached out on it and we want to be able to provide our students that opportunity. Um, and so we're informing you that we would like to move forward that way. If you have any questions, you can just let us know and we can shut that down, but we think that you'll be supported. Um, our second update is regarding our report card and parent guides for our elementary students. So in front of you, um, I did produce one copy of something that Ms. Moan, um, our director of elementary curriculum, who worked with the team of teachers last spring on, um, putting together, um, what we learned in each of our different grade levels at the K-5 level. And so each grade level has one of these little packets. Um, it includes just what you would expect to see from our students in literacy, um, also in math. And the great thing about it is it tells exactly what they're going to learn by the end of the year as well as some things the parents could do at home to support their students on pages two and three of that. As you flip through, we also were able to include, um, our characteristics of a successful learner, um, and some expectations for our special classes. And one of my favorite pages, the last page, um, is that jargon that the, um, two last people that we're talking about just now at the table of some of those words that we use in education, what that don't, we don't, you know, clarify necessarily for our families, that last page has just easy definitions of what those might be. And so each of our grade levels, kinder through fifth grade, do have one of these, um, created for them. And, um, we've pushed these out once this school year and then as Ms. Lombard shared at conferences, our teachers will use this to help our parents see and understand what our students, um, are expected to know and be able to do. All the grade levels are located on our website, so you're welcome to take a look at those. Um, obviously, we're very excited about the hard work that went into these and I'm appreciative of Mrs. Moan as well as our teachers who helped, um, curate this information. These supplement, um, a one-page document that I also put for you is we did redesign our elementary report cards. Um, for those of you that might have seen them over the last ten years, they look the exact same. It was one big page of a bunch of just words and it was hard to understand. And we know that we want to not let the way we present information get in the way of parents being able to see how their students are doing. And so, um, it was, we worked with our technology department, Mr. Cundy over in technology, who was really hard to help us. Um, he personally created this book and so, um, we're excited about it and, um, they do connect, they go hand-in-hand. So the standards didn't change, we bundled it together a little bit differently, um, but it is new for our parents this year. And so we're really excited about what they'll be able to communicate at conferences with all of these together. You might be asking, what about six-twelve? Um, we have that in the works and it, there are so many other courses that they have, but we're going to slowly start working on creating some of you because we think it's important for parents to know exactly what students are studying and also having some support at home. And so that is a work in progress that will take some time, but definitely on our to-do list. And then my third update is regarding, um, the Illinois Literacy Plan. I've talked about this a few, a couple of times. Um, the state of Illinois has a literacy plan that they are required to put into, um, place by January first of twenty-twenty-four. They just released version two of that. Um, we've been very vocal in providing some input and feedback on what that plan looks like. Um, this version is, um, much better than the first version, in our opinion, and we are still very, um, um, we are, and we're happy that we are aligned to where they're going. And so we feel very confident that the work we've been doing the last few years and continue to do is aligned there. Um, they revolve that plan around three different goals. Um, the first one being that our students receive high-quality evidence-based instructions. The second goal is really focused on our teachers and professional learning and supporting them and making sure that they are equipped to be able to deliver the, um, the, um, curriculum that we provide to our students. And then the third one is the new lens on it, but it adds in the leaders, both looking at our building leaders and our district leadership to make sure that, um, we create conditions that allow teachers to be successful, which then allows students to be successful. And so the plan revolves around those three goals. Those students, educators, and leaders are a part of it. Um, they have an image where the bottom of it is how do you connect with families and community? Because we know that families are important, with that partnership, especially with literacy. And we want to make sure that kids are getting that, um, support at home and at school. Um, currently, there is no requirement to have a specific curriculum. They have some recommendations for when you choose tools, what you might want to use for a rubric or to make decisions. So they have not come out and said everyone's going to have to use something specific, which we want to be able to have, we want to be able to make that decision, you know, locally, that's important. Um, there are a couple of things that you might hear. I know there's a session or two at Triple-I coming up on this. Um, some districts are, um, a little upset about how strongly worded some of the changes are. We are not because we've been making those shifts over the last couple of years and so we felt pretty good about it. So if you hear something, we feel very, we feel good about where we are. Um, our next steps with this include, um, it is a strategic plan item and so, um, Mr. Truax and Mrs. Moan, Mr. Truax is our six-twelve director of curriculum and Mrs. Moan is our elementary director of curriculum, are going to be pulling a K-12 team together to develop a literacy vision statement, similar to what we did with the work with math. Um, our sixth through twelfth grade students, um, we're actually in the middle of a literacy review right now. Um, you know, we just looked at some data. We're looking at this and trying to make sure that we have the right materials in front of our teachers to help support our students. And so that work will continue and we're reviewing our interventions for our students who are struggling, um, to make sure that they are aligned to the plan as well. So those are my three updates and if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So real quick, Dr. Merker, no, we're not, you don't need us to take action on the overnight trip to the softball.
No.
Right now, that'll be in center.
Um, well, there's no action because you already approved the list. If you did not think that we should do this, we would probably then need to put it on an agenda next month and approve, but we can amend it by just, uh, thought.
Yeah, I know. There's any opposition to it. Opposition to it.
Yeah, thank you for that, by the way.
And when's the last time you used the word automaticity?
We use that, we use that pretty frequently. Uh-huh. We want our kids to be able to read with accuracy and automaticity. So you do it quickly and we say it right. Yeah, it's a big indicator for our little kiddos. I know, there you go.
Yikes. Any other questions? All right, with that, thank you, Dr. Merker. We will move on to number twelve. Uh, yeah.
Well, well, um, actually tonight, uh, Ms. Allen will be presenting, uh, some highlights from our special education, um, department. Her wonderful daughter Zoe is gonna get front row seat while mom is dominating and share her on and, uh, see what this board meeting stuff is all about. So I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Allen for highlighting one of our wonderful partnerships of Easter Seals this evening and, um, all right.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for allowing my, uh, special education teacher in training to participate.
Absolutely.
Do you want me to share? You have one to share for you or are you gonna share?
Um, I think I have it. Thank you.
Can I let her share here?
Oh.
Do you have any questions, Jim?
Okay. Need to do that? So stop share?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, well, hello, everybody. My name is Jackie. I'm the director for elementary special services. I will try and get us started and then if we have to regroup and start over, we can do that. All right, so I am, uh, looking forward to sharing, um, an update on, uh, some of the work that we're doing in the department to focus on our key performance indicator that's really addressing a comprehensive review of our special education programming across the district. All right. Um, a lot of the work that we're, um, designing is focused around governance that's been provided through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um, IDEA does require that all school districts provide a continuum of services and programming that's designed to meet the variety of needs, um, that our students present with, uh, from students that present with mild to moderate needs all the way to those that present with severe and profound. Um, the IDEA requirement really does emphasize the importance of integrating students with disabilities in the least restricted environment as much as possible. Um, but when that isn't possible, we really need to open up our continuum of programming. Um, I wish there was a, I have visuals for this next part. Um, so our continuum of service, very, perfect, thank you. All right, so our continuum of service in District 158. Um, our first placement is focused really on just the general education, mainstream, traditional placement in the tier-one classroom that's accessible for all students. Um, our next layer of support offers supplementary aids and support within the general education classroom. Some of the examples you see of what those aids and supports look like are, um, visual support, uh, adaptive seating, assistive technology tools, um, that are speech-to-text, for example, that helps support students access the curriculum in a more successful manner. Our next layer of support is a general education with partner special education support. Um, in this layer of our continuum, you'll see a special education teacher pushing into the general education classroom. Um, the partner's teacher, um, model helps to, um, provide more intensified support through that partner's teaching. Um, they work on collaboration within their lesson planning, delivery of services, um, not just for students with individualized education plans, but also for students who have differentiated needs within the classroom. Our next layer of support is special education outside of the general education setting. Um, this is where a student can access an alternate environment for portions of their day to support a level of differentiation that the general education classroom and structure is not able to provide successfully. And so students are able to access this alternate environment for, um, curricular modifications, um, different environmental tools that help them, um, have much more success in engaging within their day. And then they're able to return to the general education classroom for areas that they're more successful or more at a grid-level, um, performance. Um, our last layer and our most intensive layer of support within our continuum is a self-contained program, which we're going to spend the majority of our time this evening. And so in, um, a self-contained classroom is, uh, refers to a specialized education setting where students with moderate to profound needs receive instruction separate from the general education classroom. Self-contained programs are designed to provide intensive and individualized support to students who may require a more structured or more controlled environment that will help them be more successful in achieving their academic, social-emotional, behavioral, functional, or adaptive skills. And so the visual that you see here, um, is all of our self-contained programs within the district, um, that helps to meet the variety of profiles of students that we serve, um, from our early childhood programs all the way through our post-secondary programs servicing students eighteen through twenty-two. So we have, oh, sorry. Um, we have our, I just want to make sure everybody knows the acronym. Um, so we have our special needs autism program. Uh, we have our structured education setting, strategy-add life skills, and then light for post-secondary. And our early childhood center offers a, um, self-contained program for cross-categorical needs, um, so just servicing students based on the intensity that they present with. And so in an effort to, um, really provide the intensified service and support that our students present with, not just, um, students but families and being able to support them appropriately and the staff that serves them, um, we've partnered with Easter Seals. Um, Easter Seals provides essential services and on-the-ground support to school districts across Illinois. Um, and their mission is really focused on enhancing early childhood programs through post-secondary programs, um, to better serve and provide educational services for students within those environments. Um, we've had a longstanding relationship, um, that has, uh, really been super fruitful for our teens and our families, um, and our students. Easter Seals has partnered with, uh, District 158 for about five to seven years. Um, and their mission really aligns with the core values that we've had, uh, really working towards empowering our students with disabilities, their families, um, and our communities to make sure that our students are full and active participants in society. Um, some of the impact of our partnership, um, which is really aligned again back to our key performance indicator on completing a comprehensive review and supporting, uh, the work that we know we need to do within our self-contained programs are the following. We've partnered with a board-certified behavior analyst and an instructional specialist. We've provided targeted training for our teens, um, and we'll get into that in the next slide, but we focused over the past couple of years on, uh, being able to build independence for our students, making sure that our teams are equipped with understanding how to use data to support our students' ongoing success, fostering communication and making sure that we're identifying the barriers that our students are presenting with and making sure that we have classroom environments that are structured to support student engagement and behavior management. Um, we have also, as a result of our partnership, been able to implement curricular enhancement, um, implement multifensory teaching methods and also, um, make sure that we have the specialized instructional programs and programming that our students need. Um, and then lastly, we're gonna, uh, kind of see some visuals of the classroom coaching that they provided along with, um, the classroom setup at the very beginning of the year. Uh, this year, we engaged in a training focused on identifying communication barriers and helping our teams be more equipped with addressing this for our students. Um, so we, sorry, my, my screen was different than your screen, but you're good. Okay. Okay. Our training was attended by more than 70 special services team, which was a really positive response. We were excited to see that we had a variety of staff members participating, over 70, including our behavior specialists, our administrators, per professionals, teachers, and related service providers, including social workers, physical therapists, psychologists, and we also had our AAC facilitators participate. Our AAC, sorry, AAC stands for Alternative Augmented Communication Facilitators, and just as a visual for you, this is what an AAC device looks like. It's used for students that are non-verbal, and so this device serves as their voice. And so there's many opportunities for them to engage through this tool and being able to communicate their wants and their needs. The training outcomes that were achieved through this training included a deeper understanding of how communication, how disabilities impact communication, also being able to understand the connection between behavior and communication, while also equipping our teams to be more successful and using data to make informed decisions around how to support communication for our students' success. We received overwhelmingly positive response, and 96% of our staff agreed or strongly agreed that the professional development provided impacted their professional growth and their student growth in regards to content knowledge skills overall. 96% agreed or strongly agreed that the training provided an impact for their own social-emotional growth as well as their students, and 100% agreed that the training aligned to our district's and school improvement plan. And so classroom setup, an area that we wanted to make sure our students and our staff were set up for success at the very onset of the year, recognizing that our students do require a level of structure within their classroom setting. And so that was an intensified approach that we know we needed to incorporate. And so here's a visual of the high schools. Perfect. The areas that we addressed were making sure that the environment was set up for student success, visual support that our teams were able to access provided the intensified visual supports that our students need. Communication can be very abstract for our students, right? Words you can't see unless you make it visual. And so you'll see in many of our self-contained environments that there's a visual for tasks, expectations, and even the schedule that you have to follow from moment to moment. So very visually intensive classroom. We wanna make sure that we're fostering independence as well within our environments and setting up our systems so that our students can access that without having the high dependence on adult support to do or be successful. We made sure that our environments are set up with positive reinforcement so that we are reinforcing positive behaviors and skill acquisition as well. And then lastly, making sure that our classrooms are sensory-friendly. We wanna make sure that our rooms are not overstimulating for our students by making sure that the tools they need in place to maintain regulation. And so just some examples for you to see, this is the Huntley High School Job Skills Classroom. Okay. So the, oh, good. Some of the visuals again include expectations for voice level, safety, where you sit, how you sit, how you place your body and body awareness, and then either visuals you see on the right that really helps to reinforce, reinforce the expectations throughout academic activities, behavioral activities, student engagement, and more. Classroom setup at Lickie Elementary, this is our special needs autism program, again highly visually intensive. The visuals really help our students tune into expectations and transitions throughout their day, which again fosters their independence rather than a staff member continually guiding them. We want our students to experience their own success. This is our early childhood center. Just some examples again of the visuals and the structures put in place for all students. And then lastly, we have our Marlowe Middle School. I really wanted to put this example in. They look so happy to do all of the visuals that I felt like this just needed a highlight. So this is one of our teachers at Marlowe, and you'll see again many of the supports. Because our students have such highly individualized plans, they require different visuals, different expectations, different targeted goals. So much of this is done sometimes for just one student, and so it takes the team to be able to put this in place. And so our last kind of closing activity, I'm gonna have our special education teacher in training provide you with what's called a first and fourth. A first and fourth is used for our students in order to teach them predictability and structure. And so what I've done here is...
Oh, it's McCrystal. Can you press the enter?
Thank you. So I've first presented you with a presentation, and I will next take any questions. So the visual that you have in front of you is a support that we provided to our students illustrating that first, next expectation and structure, and if you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll jump in, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. The first one, do all of our schools have a self-contained classroom?
Yes, those by campus. Our early childhood program is located on our Reed Road campus, and they have a cross-categorical structure in place for all students to access. Reed Road offers the Strategy Education Program at the elementary level, and then at middle school, there is Strategy Ed and SNAP offered on that campus. On the Reed Road campus, we offer the Structured Education Setting, which is for students with social-emotional behavioral needs, and that's located on this campus both at McHaven, Conlee, and Hyman. And then, sorry, and at Marlowe, we offer light. And then at the high school, we offer the entire continuum of self-contained places.
And on the slide, I think that was before the continuum, so is this a path any students would follow? Do you go from the top through each of the five steps you're gonna go to self-contained?
I really appreciate that question. It's not necessarily, there isn't the pathway that you're talking through to go from one to the next to the next. What we look at is making highly individualized recommendations for all students through an evaluation process whenever we're looking at placing students above and beyond that general education tier. And so our first opportunity is to work through our MTSS structures and support students in that least restricted general education environment through different interventions or modifications, and offering them the opportunities for success in that way before looking at a special education eligibility. We take that very seriously to say that a student has a special education disability without having trialed certain least restrictive interventions to see if that would meet their needs. So we start there, but when a student isn't able to successfully access those interventions or support, and they're recommended for an evaluation, the result of that will indicate where their least restricted environment can be, and that can be anywhere on the continuum, based on how they present. And we work with our team of specialists, but we also work with outside providers that provide us with diagnosis information, medical information, historical data that helps us drive where that placement across our continuum needs to be.
And a final question, maybe a little bit more touchy on this. Does the training go through any strategies to work through how do you balance, as you're finding out the right spot for the student? How do you balance the need of the other students in the classroom? And this is a topic I just ran into an old friend, a third-grade teacher, and she was talking about the same thing in Arizona that we talked about in this district, a little bit around this. How do you balance?
Yeah, and this training was specifically provided for self-contained teachers who are working with students who have very severe, profound disabilities where communication is highly impacted.
Let her finish, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
And she's hired.
Perfect. Yes.
Can I say that, Dr. McCrystal? Well, I can definitely say that.
Thank you so much. No, but thank you.
Moving on to number 13, community relations.
Alright, I don't really have anything to report, to report, however, I just wanted to make note of all the activities we're seeing all the kids in, and the recognition that just really just speaks volumes on how many opportunities our kids have, or students have, I should say. So I'm looking forward to celebrating Veterans Day tomorrow at Hyman. So Mrs. Wiley and I are gonna go visit there and watch that program. So other than that, just the FOIA's, that FOIA report that came through. I feel those. Other than that, does anybody have any questions on the board or committee? Really? Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Move on to 14, the President's Report. I can have just a couple of topics, maybe a little bit more on the serious side. The first one is, I read a news release from the McHenry County Department of Health last week, and it indicated that there have been likely 16 deaths from overdoses from opioids. They haven't clearly stated that they're opioids, but it is a real issue, and that is in the last two months, so we're talking about around 100 a year. There's some things in the press release that are outlined, one is the use of Narcan, and I think our nurses are equipped with Narcan, I'm not sure about that.
Actually, they do, our resource officers, and there are other locations at our high school that have been identified, and Mr. Dean knows our, we have those this year with Narcan in them, and it's locked and contained, but since our high school is a solo, we wanted to make sure that there were set areas that if needed, we would be able to utilize, and that training has occurred at that level.
And that's really the question I wanted to kinda pose or just bring up is, in the event that something like that happens at the high school, probably more specifically than the middle school, just to make sure that we're prepared, because it is a, it is something that can save someone's life in minutes if they happen to do this. Again, not to personally reflect, I worked with someone whose granddaughter died suddenly from fentanyl, and it is just a tragedy all around. And when I see these numbers, it scares me. So just wanna make sure we're prepared.
There'll be some things with some curricular mandates and some topics on the road of things that we must be doing. We do have a lot of things already in place. We're looking at some different opportunities to do parent workshops and education there as well. Mr. Dean had worked with our curriculum department and our secondary principals in this area, but in general, when we're talking about drugs, alcohol, and whatnot, and to see what we can do on the proactive side as well as the education side with our families. So there'll be more things coming forward. That's more on the broader scale, but it's absolutely a discussion that they have regularly in their operations meetings with high school administration. Mr. Dean is there, and they do also bring in outside resources or speakers as needed.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And secondarily, I know with the appointment of Ms. Wiley, there's been a lot of questions about the release of the interviews, and I just wanna address this kind of head-on here because I know there's a lot of interest in this. We recorded the videos of the interviews of the nine candidates with the intention of putting it, putting them out there, and we would put them out there after the appointment was made. So we made the appointment at 12:35 a.m. on Friday, last Friday, and then there were some people who were out of the office in the district, so they didn't go out on Friday morning. Over the weekend, we received several FOIA's requesting specific information about the interviews as well as the second round interviews for this. This was all done under closed session, and we stopped and we reflected on it, and someone in the district actually went out and got legal advice on this, and the attorney gave us the permission to really do not release anything from closed session. So for that reason, at this point, we're not going to move forward with releasing any of the videos. We have done this in the past. If you look in 2013, 2018, and 2020, those interviews were done under open session. So there was no question that anybody could have walked in and watched them. In 2022, it was done in closed session, which reflects our policy, which is what we have here. And I know there's a lot of questions about this, why are you hiding them and things like that? I wanna make it very clear, I would love that these videos go out. I'm going to respect the advice we get from our attorney. I think what everybody would see is nine very passionate people about this district who would love to volunteer their time to be up here and help that, and in my opinion, we had nine qualified candidates to be up here, every one of them offering a unique voice up here and do that. And I will also highlight that in 2025, there will be five seats open. So I hope all of them run for this and bring their voices to the table. And again, I know I've that out there, but in the end, we're gonna follow the advice of the legal side, and we're gonna move ahead, welcome Ms. Wiley, and move forward with educating our kids. That, I will move to 14.1, which is board discussion. Any new business items?
I've got two.
Okay, thank you, Mr..
One, years ago, our district had a pretty robust and active parent committee, and also from administrative side that supported gifted students, and I don't know where that is today. So I'd like to hear more on where that's at and what kind of progress is being made to address that segment of our, of our community. So you don't have to do it now, I know that, I know it's a...
Nope, we can absolutely bring that through the curriculum committee, and I have some presentation and information on how they address that at the different levels, as well as just making sure we are taking those to our, on that level and continuing to see them grow. So we will definitely bring that forward in a future curriculum.
Please, and thank you. Number two, last week, I attended the Illinois Association of School Boards Fall Dinner. This occurs twice a year. Last week, it was held at Aurora West High School, and there will be another one in the spring. This is open to all of our school board members and all of the administrators at that level, I believe, but usually superintendent, depends from what I'm aware. And the next one will be in the spring, I believe it's in March, and this will be the last week of March, so it does not conflict with a board meeting that we have that we held at McHenry High School. I encourage other board members to attend these, and you have an opportunity to have a rubber chicken or a nice dessert. But on a serious note, it's an excellent opportunity to meet other board members, learn about challenges, and network a little bit that other school districts face, as well as see other institutions. Couple of years ago, I was at, I believe it was McHenry High School, and they did a referendum that specifically was addressing a lot of the industrial education components, and the program that they have created and the facility that they have is absolutely stunning, very impressive. And it's through opportunities like this that we have in order to go see and experience other districts and learn from what other organizations are doing. So I encourage, I encourage the people sitting up here to take an active part in that and learn something new. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Struck. Any other new business?
I have something. I wanted to, I wanted to get some more data or information on social-emotional learning and what it's doing for our district or not doing. In light of the Eleanor Report Card, I would like to just get the exact data as far as the minutes of it, what grades it's being implemented through, and how it's being implemented period, comparing to like the COVID year when this all started, because I believe that's, I've been told that's when it came about. Have we seen better behavior? Have we seen bullying dropped off? I'm just curious of the benefits. I'm just curious of the benefits of this being integrated through our curricula. So, I'm not drawing any conclusions, however, if we're losing ground academically, we need all hands on deck on that, to change that. And I spoke with numerous parents just in the last week, and it just kind of urged this, inside of me to bring this up. Not many people are aware, or parents are aware, of how much, on a daily basis, they're being taught this for students, like every thirty minutes of every day. So, I just wanna be wise on the minutes we have with our kids, and I just wanted to know more about it. So, a discussion maybe at the committee, at the whole, just to hear just more information on that.
We could certainly put a presentation together with that data, what that looks like, what's done during that time, how often that's done, and then that impact has been, we'll bring that forward as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other topics? All right, with that, some good topics there, and thank you, Mr. Troy, for the call, and to go over the meeting that does sound interesting. We're all gonna be going to the triple I conference next week, so there'll be a lot of discussions there as well. All right, with that, I will move on to number fifteen, and just because I got a little bit of feedback before we go through, and just vote on this, I just wanted to call out on the calendar side. I actually personally like our calendar, but there was a fair amount of feedback that I received that we can have a discussion on, we need to make a discussion about it, of trying to make a start a little bit later in the year. Now, as a parent of a high school student, I would absolutely not want to lose that semester side of things, but just as the calendar really goes together for next year, looking at it, consider those inputs into it. Sorry, that one little extra comment there. But with that, unless there's any, is there any objections, anything in the consensus that's changed? So, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's written.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Murray?
Yep.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Carvillana?
Yes.
All right, with that, I will move on to number fifteen. Action items will call, will call to sixteen point one, the delegate assembly, I don't pass it to Mr. Troy, but I think it's gonna represent us at the triple I conference, but we just grew, I think there's either seven items or?
No, there's more than that. Okay, so just to let everybody in the audience know, so every year, we attend this conference of school board officials, or school board members, Illinois Association of Superintendents, and I've watched the acronym, but that's the gist of it. And the third group is the school business officials, and all of these together form the triple I that has been referred to multiple times. As part of our responsibilities as the school board, not just us, but all the school boards across the state, one of the things that happens at this is a delegate conference. And so, every school board selects one person to represent the voice of the board in voting on different resolutions that are brought at the school board level. And then the people that attend this conference vote accordingly to support or not support the recommendations that have made, been made through the Illinois Association of School Boards. This is a somewhat lengthy process, but I think it's a really good one that's been refined in the last couple of years, where school districts, school boards are allowed to make a resolution and bring it forth to be heard so that the School Board Association can advocate with the legislatures and any other powers that be in order to advance policy on that state level or other organizations within. This is that, our job to provide that voice to the delegate assembly, and then the other, all the other school districts vote on this. It used to be done with a placard card, kind of similar to what you might have seen with an auction, where they wave a stick and it has a big number on it. In order to do yeas and nays, thankfully, last year was the first year that they've done this electronically, and I attended it the last several years, and the electronic version was a big improvement. Suffice to say, this year's resolutions have been presented to us in advance. When these presentations are done, there is a committee that hears out the presentation and the resolution, and then makes a determination on their own as they debate and discuss whether the School Board Association supports this. So, in the documentation that we've been provided, and this trips the school boards up year after year, there is a recommendation, and then we, as a board, are asked whether we support the recommendation or, or agree with the presentation, the recommendation, or not agree. And, and so that's what you have in front of you with this packet. There are five that are new resolutions, and then there's another area that is labeled "do not present." So, there's a total of nine. To my surprise, last year or two years ago, it is possible for one that is recommended not to be presented to be resurrected. And so, there has to be a motion and a vote taken in order to bring one that was not recommended for presentation to bring it back to the floor, and then go ahead and have those school boards vote on it. So, if a school board isn't prepared to vote on it, the delegate really doesn't know what the voice of the board is, and then has to kind of make a judgment call. So, it's my recommendation that we do, as we've done in the past, is present a, or a vote for all of these nine resolutions, whether they are going to the floor or not. So, if anything does get resurrected, we have the delegate, which you mentioned was me, but whoever that might be, still be able to present that vote to represent the school board position. With that, I don't, if you want me to go through these individually, or, okay. So, the first resolution has to do with industrial construction, and the submitting district stated, and this is rather lengthy, but they essentially.
Don't, don't, don't read the whole.
Don't read the whole thing, I wasn't going to, no, no.
Read what the question is, if we need the rationale, we can get into it, but I think there's a bunch of us who don't. Yeah, we don't, we don't have the stuff, we've got our homework, to be honest with you. They're emailing it to us, but I would, I would just read the question, what the sport is. If we wanna dive deeper, then we can look into it.
And I wasn't gonna go, because this was a huge presentation itself. But, so the first one comes from a Pleasantdale School District 107, I'm presuming they're downstate, and they're asking the School Board Association to help prohibit construction of industrial facilities near schools. So, they presented their argument. In the end, the Resolutions Committee recommended not to adopt this, and so it's our task whether we agree with the res, with the recommendation not to adopt, or we go in the opposite direction.
Now, reading the rationale, what's your interpretation, is the rationale sound?
No, actually, I agree, so the, excuse me, the Resolutions Committee recommended not to adopt, and I concur with their rationale.
Okay.
This didn't make much sense to me overall, and I just thought it was a little bit over the edge, so.
Okay, doesn't make sense to you, doesn't make sense to me.
I second that.
So, everybody needs, or unless you want to go ahead and adopt this, I'll assume that it's a, a full board that's saying, yes, seven, oh, do not adopt.
Right, unless you have somebody pick up doing, and we just go in and somewhere.
Okay. So, we'll go with "do not adopt" on that one. Number two, board employee relations, statement of resolution, the IASB shall request that Illinois Legislature consider legislation providing educational funding to all school districts to offset the cost of a school resource officer. The Resolutions Committee recommended that this be adopted. Go ahead and let her.
My thought would be, yeah, we could get additional resources to support, we, we end up paying a decent amount, because we want our resource officers, but the help we could get from the state. In regard to that, we would, I can't imagine we'd wanna support that, so.
Okay, so we'll follow the recommendation to adopt that stance. Number three, employee relations, statement of the resolution, the IASB shall support changes to the federal and state school transportation regulations that return licensing requirements to pre-February 2023 levels at minimum, allow local training and testing for bus driver candidates. And there's a lot more to this, but that's essentially the resolution statement.
Admin-wise, could, yeah, can you guys speak, can you guys speak to that?
Yeah, they've essentially increased the leaning from that, without reading the whole thing, they've increased the qualifications and the training and the needs to get a bus driver's license, which has made it harder for us on the recruiting front, not that the previous one was the next row bus, but we have seen where folks have tried to be onboarded into the process, will drop off halfway through, so. Like, they're trying to return that to what it originally was, to make it a little bit easier for districts to recruit and retain folks.
Okay, so you believe it does, it, it makes it easier to get through the requirements in order to get qualified bus drivers there?
Yes.
What is the?
So, the Resolutions Committee recommended that this be adopted. I did have a problem with this one, actually. The, the original reasoning is to try and address federal regulations, and I'm not sure that the State Board of Education or the State Board of School Board Associations really should be addressing things at a federal level. I can understand state changes, but we had this last year, a couple of years ago, where it was something else that had to do with federal regulations, and the position at that time was to not adopt it because it just is the wrong, wrong mechanism, and, and it's the, it's the little fly against the big, you know, whatever the beast is that you're trying to, to address. So, it, it's a question of a local, a state school board association trying to address a federal issue, and there's just, in my opinion, there's an incompatibility in those two organizations trying to address this.
I, I kind of remember that, and I agree in general, that, yeah, we typically, we're lobbying our state, not national. On this particular item, I probably, if it's regulated, if it's more regulated by national, and you have to, the impetus has to come through your state to deal with it on a national level, I, I, I follow what you're saying, but I think in this specific instance, to advocate in that direction and let the state people work, work it to the national level, that's who does the overall regulation.
Yeah, the other question that I had written down here was, by changing and lowering the standards, are we sacrificing safety? That one I can't address, because, you know, if we had safe drivers under the old regulations, did we make things more safer, or are they really unchanged between the before and the after versions?
Yeah, you know, just the transportation of the year, that I probably didn't have to come and face the issue to some with the way folks were being licensed, first day was your, you know, run-of-the-mill, you know, accidents, how it came from, you know, some were not being trained enough for the license.
So, the licensure component of the requirements, or kind of behind the wheel, if you will, are not what I, those have not changed, it's some of the other regulations or hoops, or some of the things they have to do pre before they even can get there, and that's made it more difficult for, you know, some of the hours before you can even get on to test out and to do the behind-the-wheel component, that has been difficult for many transportation departments. So, the, the component of what they need to do for safety of driving that vehicle, those, to my knowledge, unless they change this year, have not changed. And so, for that aspect, I would not, if that was the case, I wouldn't support it at all. But, you know, when I look at what the committees recommending, the committee's recommending to not adopt, so.
Actually, they're recommending to adopt.
To adopt.
To adopt. Yep. What column of page twelve?
Resolutions Committee, oh, to adopt, why did you do that? It's on the right side.
The right side is the next one, correct. No, generally speaking, I, I agree with the premise, it's just, are we fighting the right battle here with this, that's all. But I, I think the rationale is sound, and we should adopt this and support this. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
All right, the next one, so unless there's any dissent, we'll support the adopt resolution.
Yep.
Okay, next one has to do with board employee relations. Statement of the resolution is requesting the Illinois Legislature, or the IASB petitioned the legislature to consider Illinois Department of Child and Family Services' child abuse and neglect training tracking system, so IL-DCFS and CANTs as a means to fulfill the employment history review of FACE law. Do you wanna take a moment to read up on this, it's not a very long write-up?
Because I read this one, it was that we do the FACE law, and I know that there is some work on our HR department getting that there, and that this district was recommending that we use something that's already in place through DCFS, and the Resolutions Committee is saying, well, there's more work on that, but they recommend not to adopt it. As I read that, I'm sorry, check, is there, I got to agree with that.
Yeah, I do speak to FACE law, we've actually taken on very well. We have a portal called Verifin, they came out right away, and kind of took the fate by storm, kind of became the go-to, and so essentially, what it does for us, what was a paper process, presented via printed off, fill it in by hand, Verifin took that and turned it into a digital process. So, essentially, an email and a link, we send to potential employees, they self-fill it out, and then get them all night long, they come back, but a lot better than exchanging the process. So, while it ended up being cumbersome to start, we've got it under control. The one thing that we did not have on our radar was that if anyone's ever worked for you, and they go to work at another school district in the state, you're getting that check back. So, a lot of it is going back into some old files and, you know, making sure we're signing off on the right thing. So, with that, they're wanting to put it through, it was entered into a database, it sounds like.
Yeah, so they, they wanna utilize a DCFS database to do this. My take on this was that this was a timing thing, where at the time, this particular school district made an effort to try and address a problem, when in the meantime, the problem worked itself out with this particular organization or company that has taken this and run with it statewide. So, if anything, this is a, a timing issue where this is really unnecessary, because there's something that's better in place. However, you know, the, the DCFS component notwithstanding, and then the other part of this, they said, I got the impression that this is, that there's an incompatibility between the two systems. So, it's one of those, I'm gonna use something, or recommend that we use something else in order to fix a problem that isn't quite a good fit for fixing the problem in general.
And Verifin's not the only company, I've seen a couple others out there that we get requests from, but Verifin came to the stage because they were giving you discount, if you remember, the Illinois Schools Association, and so there was a connection there. But the system we've got going works well, in my opinion. But, yeah, there may have been a timing issue, or the nature of when this came out, that it was going to be a very cumbersome and enormous process for districts, who loves to support this third party.
Boy, they said all that, I concur with the Resolutions Committee. System's in place already.
So, agree with "do not adopt," that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. All right, and the last of the first five, financing public's education local. This is a lengthy resolution. Have the Illinois Association of School Boards advocate for additional funding to be provided for regional alternative safe schools to allow. be provided for regional alternative safe schools to allow elementary appropriate program, additional funding and approved certification programs for board certified behavior analysts in school districts and additional flexibility with student discipline to help local districts provide the safest learning environment possible. So this is a very short write-up. If you want to read this off really quickly, I'll give you a couple minutes.
So the interesting thing there, that's part of this, and they kind of call it out in the analysis there, is that they want to review SB 100. That it's meeting the original intended goals.
I think for this one, the second through fourth lines are what I highlighted, that we all, IASB already has a position statement that states IASB will advocate using evidence based funding for alternative schools. So there's already a mechanism in place, and I think that was the gist of why they said do not adopt this. There's not a very long write-up here, and frankly, I think the rationale is even shorter. So whether the school district didn't think this out very well or didn't want to elaborate very much, I agree with the Resolutions Committee to not adopt this. The review of Senate Bill 100 is notwithstanding, that's not the purpose of the resolution.
Is there an opportunity to bring that up as a resolution?
It would be in the future.
We missed that window and.
Yeah, but we have, but I would keep that in your radar.
Yeah, that's something to probably write down, put on your calendar, and I think it's April when we start to submit these kinds of resolutions. Start putting the pen to paper and say, yes, this is what the position statement that we'd like to see taken, and then here's the rationale. And you can read through these, or I'm sure that we have prior years on record, that some of these are extremely well-written and well-thought-out. So it's something that we want to advocate for and make it to this packet. It's probably something we should explore as a group.
That maybe, I intend to support not to adopt.
Any dissenting on that?
I agree with what they're recommending.
Thank you. Correct, yeah. All right, the next four that didn't even make it to the presentation area, none of these are recommended for presentation, much less adoption. If you'd like to take a moment to read through these, it's not a very long read. Good. Anybody else? All right, we'll let these be as. Die slow death. All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Do we do an official vote to nominate you to represent us as the assembly?
Entirely up to you how you want to.
I don't think it is.
Is anybody going to object to Mr. Troy representing as the delegate? All right, with that, thank you. All right, 16.2. Supplemental resources, Mr. Almeyer.
Nothing else to add on that.
Any questions about that? From there, can we have a, I'll make a motion to approve this as presented?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Can I have a little poll of?
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mr. Bitman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Then we move to 16.3, which is the preliminary tax levy, Mr. Almeyer.
I do have a few things to say on this one. You know, I do want to start with, I loved having our little, our little student scoop down here at the end of the table, Wyatt and Semra, because they, as well as the band and the orchestra students, right, really highlighted all the things that we do for students, all the different resources that we provide those students. And it's a reminder, I kind of wish I was doing this presentation immediately following that little fun little part of the presentation, because it really highlights everything why we're here. And when we're asking the community and the public to pay property taxes, when we're asking them to support 60-plus percent of the revenue that we do receive, that we don't take lightly, it's pretty important to understand why we're here and why we do what we do. So I did want to start with that. And I'm always excited to present this because out of everything we present from a financial perspective, aside from the annual budget, it's probably one of the most important things we do, especially because, well, it does involve the community, it does involve the public, and it involves a lot of our community that, well, they don't even have kids in our community, but we represent them in the community doing what we do for our students. So that's also very important. I'd like to start with, well, our district's recommendation, and our recommendation this year is administration is recommending extending the 2023 levy with the increase of 5% in accordance with the property tax extension limitation law. And with that tax extension calculated, 5% rate for levy based on our extension from prior year, and excluding new construction, the district will extend approximately $3.6 million more than we asked for last year. And as a result of estimated new construction, and we'll talk about these in a little more detail here in a second, we're expecting to receive approximately, and this is a very preliminary number because that's why they call this the preliminary levy, approximately 1.02 million will be levied, which has no impact on existing homeowners. So those are all the new homeowners moving in with very limited commercial property. And that $4.6 million, that $3.6 and that $1 million of additional tax dollars coming in represents approximately 3.5% of our FY '24 budget. So just to kind of give you a little perspective of the $120, I believe, the $9 million we just recently approved. So going through the document, I'm going to probably show this because I know we have some new board members, and I want to make sure that we all understand some of these documents. Next month, I will be doing the truth in taxation hearing, the levy hearing, which we do every year regardless of our requirement to do so. We do that every year, and that will be on December 21st. And I'll get into a little more detail and actually have a presentation for the board and the community at that levy hearing. But summarizing some of what we just talked about, and I'll share some of these documents. EAV, okay, EAV is a big indicator of our tax rate, right? And we all look at EAV and we look at the market value of our homes, and we're hoping that, well, the market value of our homes and the EAV of the school district goes up because when that goes up, well, the tax rate comes down. That doesn't necessarily mean we're going to ask for less than prior year, but our tax rate goes up or down, and it is a very important, if our school district is performing very well, for instance, people want to move into our community, well, home values go up and it does impact certainly the tax rate that we offer our community. And knowing that we have one of the lowest tax rates in McHenry County, we want to continue to see that and strive to keep that, okay? So our EAV actually is expected to increase based on the preliminary EAV reports from both counties, Kane and McHenry, 10.57%. That's the highest, the highest it's been in a while. But I caution that 10.57% because they call it the preliminary levy because there is a lot of time for homeowners and small businesses to go through the board of review process and challenge their assessed values. And typically, we see this increase, this preliminary increase decrease by as much as 1% to 2% by the time the actual levy comes out, but it's still a very good sign. And it's increasing by 10.57% to approximately $1.8 billion. That's a pretty big number. Wasn't, it was only a few years ago that we just hit $1.4 billion again, and for a long time after the housing crash, the crisis, and where we had a 40% drop in EAV, it tipped us almost 10 years, 11 years to get back to that $1.4 billion. So sitting at $1.85 billion is pretty good. We have estimated new construction between both counties coming in at $23.7 million. That decreased, excuse me, estimated new construction approximately $23.7 million, that's a decrease from prior year's $26.2 million, okay? Again, it's a preliminary estimate. When we ran the reports from McHenry County just two and a half weeks ago, well, McHenry County estimated $11 million. Well, they continue to revise every week their new construction numbers, so the numbers you see here will change a little bit. Hopefully, they'll increase and not decrease as we were waiting for townships to finalize some of their numbers, okay? But 20, to give you an idea, $23.7 million, which will bring in an additional $1 million in property taxes, is about $8 million more than we budgeted, okay? The $26 million, we were feeling like it was a blip because if you looked at the trended increases of new construction over the years, $26 million was the highest we've had in a very, very long time. So we were expecting, based on discussions with the village, based on discussion with and understanding what new developers we had on the residential side coming in, we did expect that to decrease. It is decreasing, but I think residential took over and we, a lot more new homes were sold than expected. Within the report, I do break out the Kane County EAV as well as the McHenry County EAV, I'll let you go through that. But primarily driven by an increase in assessed value, combined with that 5% extension rate, the operating fund cap tax rate, the tax rate that we talked about, is expected to decrease almost 4%, 3.81% to approximately $4.30, and that's down from last year's $4.47. Talking about the importance of increasing EAV by 10.57% plus that new construction is what is driving down our tax rate to approximately 4.30. Again, that'll change once the final tax computations come out in March timeframe. I've also provided you a history on the very third page of the document, the third page of the memo, a history of CPIU, what we use when we look at PTEL and the property tax extension law. And if you look from 2008 through 2019, 13 years there, right, I've been here 15, the average CPI that we've extended to the community is 1.7%. But truly, if you look at this chart, 2021 and 2022, CPI at 7% and 6.5%, obviously, we all, we're all living in the day and time for which we're seeing this happen to us. It's highly unusual. The last time CPI was above 4% was in 2007, and that was the highest year we've ever had. So 2021 and 22 levy years, 22 and 23 are truly exceptional. The attachments that I've provided you are the preliminary assessor estimated EAV reports for both counties. I circled the important numbers, I've circled the rate setting EAV, I've also circled the new construction number on the right-hand side. There's two of those sheets. Each county updates these almost weekly, so by the time in the middle of December comes and we finalize the levy for you, some of these numbers will change, but materially, you know, we're still going to, administration is still asking for 5%, and some of the numbers will change a little bit, but I don't think they'll change materially. But we'll see, we'll see what happens over the next several weeks with those counties. On the third page or the fourth page, I provided two 2023 levy calculation pages. In the very first page, in the second column from the right, you'll see a levy increase percentage, and that levy increase percentage is what we call the ballooning percentage. We balloon the levy, we increase the levy because we're estimating what new construction will be finalized at. And we're estimating what new construction will be finalized at because it's not finalized until February, March timeframe. And if we don't levy enough, and let's just say new construction comes in at $10 million higher than this $23 million that we have here, well, essentially, we lose the ability to receive the taxes on that additional new construction. Why we balloon it.
For the current year and future years.
And future years.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. So we balloon it just to cover us on an estimate of new construction that has gone south, and that has happened to a lot of districts in the past. So many districts around us balloon it 3%, 10%. District 300 used the gold, 40%. Way too much. So with a levy increase percentage of 1%, a balloon percent of 1%, that covers up for an additional $18 million of new construction. And historically, we, over the last several years, we've used 1%. So where I will ask for guidance from the board, not only to approve this preliminary levy, but it'll be to approve the 1% balloon that I will come forth with at the levy hearing on December 21st. I also provided an example of the certificate of tax levy that we will file with the counties, which is incredibly important because if we don't file this by the last Tuesday in December, well, we don't receive this money. Of course, they make sure we file it and we make sure we file it. And then on the last couple pages, I provided another 2023 levy calculation page without the levy increase, without the balloon percentage, and that's important because, well, this is what we're expecting our levy revenue to be next year based on these numbers. But these numbers change a little bit, of course, this will change, but this is a good estimate of what our levy revenues would be without the ballooning. And then on the final page of your preliminary levy worksheet, and also the other reason I'm walking you through this is you're going to receive this exact same packet at the next levy hearing, at the levy hearing on December 21st. That shows a history of our levies from 2020 through 2023, so it shows our last three years' actual extensions by fund. It shows you our operating fund cap tax rate and our all funds rate. It also shows you new construction and EAV by year. So I'm providing that for your viewing pleasure. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have. Actually, I do have one last thing, and I know this is part of every levy update. At 5%, with a 5% increase, a homeowner with a $200,000 home will increase with, excuse me, with the increase in the homestead exemption from $6,000 to $8,000, and that's very important. I'm not sure if homeowners know that the homestead exemption increased this year, but it's increased by $2,000, we'll see an approximate $99 increase in the property tax bill for the school district. Neutralizing that and taking that homestead exemption, well, kind of off the table, so to speak, for a $300,000 home, it's approximately $190. So the lower the value of the home because of the homestead exemption, there's more, the homeowner will see as large of an increase, but that's primarily driven by the homestead exemption. So I did want to note that and the importance of that. And then I always note, exclusive of the 5% increase, taxpayers should be aware that individuals, because they always compare their bill against their neighbors, might go up or down based on individuals' assessments as determined by the township assessor and/or fluctuations in proportionment between Kane County and McHenry County. But what we're asking for is a 5% increase in the property tax extension in accordance with PTEL. And with that, I open that up for a board discussion or a question.
Okay. Again, to note CPI was above the 5%, so our taxpayers are being protected by the tax cap, so if we are limited at 5, we're not getting full CPI. The question I would have, obviously, I understand, follow all of that. I think what I'll point out is the overall, what I'm seeing from the townships is, you know, it's kind of a uniform increase graph, and I know it was, I think, 8.9% from equalization. So the state gets, you know, sales data, and then they report back to the various townships and tell them how the relationship to their EAV was to the sales price, and that's where that equalization factor comes every year. But when everybody moves the same amount, everybody ends up being in the same place. As you pointed out, PTEL is a rate indexing system, so our rate goes up for whatever that CPI increase is and then goes down for that EAV increase from the existing.
Okay. So the. And in times of rising EAV, as Mr. Quagliano pointed out, homeowners are more likely to see, right, there's less fluctuation in individual, his estimate, when market values are going up. But when market values are flat or going down, and individual homeowners and/or small businesses are challenging assessment, you might. you might have one of your neighbors receive a 10% increase in their taxes while another neighbor sees a decrease in their taxes. So there's more variability during times of stagnant market growth and/or decline. So this is a good thing.
Yeah. So the other piece of this, so the other, you went through our cap funds, also for bond and interest. Show that extension, I think, at the 12, you know, again, the debt gets extended. It's not tax cap. So that's at 12, $12,257,000, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. So that's the piece that we are going to possibly address, what we will address.
Correct. And it's really not a place for the levy hearing, but certainly we could discuss it at the December 21st board meeting.
Right.
And, you know, I'll take advisement from the board whether or not. Generally, I don't have resolutions in December. Generally, we work with the attorneys. And once the board approves, that we will move forward with an abatement resolution. We will have those resolutions drafted and presented to the board in January or February so that we can then send them to the county by March 15th before Treasury sends out the tax bill.
Right. So we don't have to have a full-blown discussion on fund and interest levy and abatement right now. But I just definitely get it on everybody's radar that as we are going down the path of potentially a 5% full boat operating funds increase, that we are going to look to mitigate that impact to our taxpayers with some level of abatement on our debt. And again, the purpose of that is to not affect, not to permanently have an effect on our operating funds levy, but to provide a, some form of relief to our taxpayers. And the form of debt abatement, that comes from, the funds come from the existing balance. There is a fund balance in a bonded interest fund, and then we will probably have to utilize funds from operating surplus as past fund balances in order to accomplish that. Like I said, it would probably be a discussion at the next finance committee. We'd start having that discussion.
Right. Any other questions?
Mine's a really short one. Is the 1% balloon enough, or we're going to be comfortable on that one? Or is it, should we balloon that like 1.5?
No, I do believe a 1% balloon based on, Grathen is one of the bigger counties and that township finalized their values. And so I do believe, especially in McHenry County. And that's where the majority of our residential housing is coming from. I think 18 million is more than enough. Okay. Thank you.
Other question? All right, I'll make a motion to move forward for approval for both here, the preliminary tax levy as presented by the small area. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Craddy. I'll be Mr. Craddy, Mr. Quaglio. Have a little call, little quick.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Present.
Mr. Quaglio.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
All right, with that, it will move forward for the preliminary tax levy and move on to number 17. Are there any public comments? All right, Ms. Ross.
Okay. First, I want to start off and say something I forgot to say before, and thank you to Marlowe for their Veterans Day celebration. It was a beautiful thing to see on our site. And I think that that probably should have happened every day and posted every day, but that's my own want. The next thing is about the Narcan. The availability of that would be greatly helpful to staff as well. They're just as at risk as everybody else. And if they get it, it can take them down too. So that should be a safety precaution for everyone involved, and everybody should want it all over the place. My PTAC feedback, I honestly didn't even really get into it until she started giving some of her feedback, and it triggered some thoughts. I think that the size overall was actually massively helpful. 80 people for an 8,000-student district, seemingly 8,000 to 16,000 parents, means that attendance of 80 people is less than 1%. I don't think that that's too much. We just have to figure out how to manage it. Group leaders is a great suggestion, could be more staff or maybe even the board members as group leaders. My next thing is pre-work would have been a great suggestion. And it adds up on collecting that paperwork so that we didn't have chicken scratch and random notes, would have been a great idea. One of the takeaways from what I heard there was that for discipline, that staff is not equipped to deal with many behavioral issues, and they need more training and support. That would be more valuable to staff and students rather than the push for fake orange frog happiness. Hearing we have the data or the ability to collect data made me wonder why we aren't using it as we should or publishing it so parents can have factual information. The last thing, I just sat there and listened to Jackie Allen's presentation, which is fantastic, very informative. But the visual representation of self-contained being at the bottom of that pyramid was a punch in the gut. I get that it's not what it was meant to be. I encourage you all to visit these classrooms to see a true glimpse into how different these classes are than what you're used to. What stuck out to me is the adaptive speaking device and how useful, but also how frustrating that device can be at the same time. I'd guess that a few of you have never even seen one of those. Now imagine being limited to express what you want only on what is on that device. Second, imagine having to follow a Belgro first-last communication model forever. Though I'm not knocking this, and I see the extreme value as it's been helpful for my own daughter, it is also visually slightly defeating as a parent. Imagine your own kids being limited to only this as a way of communicating with you. Then put yourself in those shoes if it were you and how frustrated you would be when people didn't understand. Or in their parent's shoes of how hard this is, and then the staff's shoes on how they struggle with this. Our district does so much to help our kids communicate on all levels, and I hope that we continue exploring more robust options. I've suggested it before, and this presentation pushed the need for a sign language program even more in my mind. Have it as a language option and use it to help current staff and students. Remember, our population with IEPs is growing at a very rapid rate. And someday, many of these current students will be special needs parents, and some of you may be special needs grandparents, and you'll wish that these things would have been implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. All right, moving on to number 18. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:52 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglio. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.